Without a shadow of a doubt, it's the Crockett Show in social media history. I want to welcome you to another episode of the War Zone. If you don't know who I am, that's because you've been living under a rock. You know me, I am the five-star general. School board elections are set. Nobody can get in, you can only get out. I need to give you fair warning. Five-star ain't playing no games, bro. I can promise you that one. Let's get to it, man. Say, man, I want to welcome you to another episode of the War Zone and tell you thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the time out to tune in. As you know, without you guys, I would not have a show. So let's make sure we got all our stuff set and we streaming everywhere we need to stream. I've been watching, uh, looks like the Supreme Court in the state of Texas. Said that the governor's anti-mask mandate where you can't, you can't, um, mask these kids. Um, they upheld that. So now the question is, what happens now? Are they still gonna mandate that these children wear masks after the governor has taken it to the state of Texas? You filed a lawsuit and you actually, you lost, you lost your lawsuit. So it's a TRO right now, so they still gotta go to court. But when it's all said and done, I don't think it's, they're gonna come out to where, you know, they, they can, you know, just force masks on people. That, that, that does not work. Uh, so, you know, you got all that going on. Well, I want to tell you guys that the school board races have been set and we're gonna go over them tonight to a certain degree. Um, and we'll use tonight as a means if you good with it. Let's, let's make sure. The one thing you gotta do when you're constantly running for office is you have to raise money. So tonight, we gonna try to raise a little money. Whatever you decide to give, that's your business. Um, you know, did, if you can do this, do this, pick one of them, do this. We need to raise some money tonight. We need to raise some money so we can keep moving and doing the things that we need to do. But the races are set. So I'm gonna go through, and if you, if you a candidate and, and you're not the incumbent, I'm gonna be honest with my assessment. I am going to be honest with my assessment. And if you are a incumbent, I'm going to be honest with my assessment. So tonight, let's raise a little money. You know, if you decide you wanna, you wanna, um, donate to my campaign, you can do that. Um, let's put something up for you to see what you can do. Okay. So if you want to donate to the campaign, you can Zelle it to that number. Please don't try to call me, it's just a number that we're using. It's an alternate phone, straight for, just for campaigns. You can, you can Zell me at 832-933-3447, or you can Cash App me at Dollar Sign Gary Monroe. Let's see, let's see, let's, let's pull up the races. So far, may change by in the morning because maybe they didn't put everything into the computer, but we're gonna look at it. All right. Let me go in, let me, let me make sure that, uh, we got, we got everything we need. Hold on a second, we want to make this as big as possible. Okay, so now we're gonna look at the school board races. All right. Houston Independent School District. In District One, you have Matthias Kapinski and Jeanette Garza-Lindon. The incumbent in that seat is Elizabeth Santos. Uh, I guess Ms. Santos decided not to run, uh, and if she did, that's her business. But these are the people that you have running in District One. Um, uh, hold on. Okay, there you go. These are the people that you have running in District One. So you have to, let me put that up there. There we go. So let, let's talk about Matthias Kapinski. Never heard of. I don't know who they are. I don't know who this person is. Um, Jeanette Linda Garza. And here's my problem with this type of race right here. This is my problem with it. For four years, we've gone through pure hell with the board that we have. We've gone through pure hell with the board that we have. Why you people wait till the last minute? To pop up like you know what's best for children in education? Please don't walk through the door in any form that I'm in and get to talking like you got all the answers because you don't. Now, I'm not gonna talk bad about these good people. They may be good people. My question is, is why we've been going through this hell? While these people have not been educating children, not servicing special ed children, not paying our teachers enough money? Where have you people been? Where have you been? Don't use this opportunity as a means to try to just get in the door. Because right now, where we are from an educational standpoint, this is not gonna work this time. This is what people do every time there's an election. You're nowhere to be found for four years and then you pop up and then you jump in these elections and it really messes things up for good people that could get in there and do some great work. Maybe these two will, maybe they'll be better than Santos. Who knows? Let's go to the next race. You have Caroline Walters, Maria Benzone, and Sue Diegard. Diegard would be the incumbent. But in this race, after speaking with people in this race, I'll probably throw my support behind Caroline Walter. She's a mom and, you know, not, not a bunch of fancy degrees and, okay, so maybe this mom can make common sense decisions. So I've, I've spoken with her, uh, do I not like Sue Diegard? I feel she doesn't have a backbone. I feel she's the swing boat and she'll go anywhere the wind blow. She never wants to make her constituents upset. So she's never going to just stand and say, this is wrong. She's not gonna do that. So that, that, I would probably rock with Caroline Walter in that particular race in District Five. Let's go to the next race in District Six. Let's go in now. Okay, let's look at it. You got Gregory DeGeiter, Holly Marie Flynn-Vilaseca, and Kendall Baker. Holly Marie Vilaseca has never impressed me as a board member. She's never impressed me as a board member. The bottom line, whatever way Anne Sung votes, that's normally the way that Holly's gonna vote. Well, if you think I'm wrong, go back and look at the minutes from the meetings and then you'll see that. You will see that. Uh, Gregory DeGeiter, don't know him. I, I want y'all to understand when I say this, I don't, I don't miss school board meetings. Even when I'm not there, I'm watching them virtually. I don't, I don't know Gregory. I mean, where did you come from? Kendall Baker. Kendall Baker has ran for several offices. I've had the opportunity to speak with him and I'll probably support Kendall. And a lot of people will be like, well, why Kendall? He, he had issues. Uh, I'm sorry, how many issues did Holly have? Let's see what type of issues Holly had. Participated in a walk-on quorum, violated the law as it pertains to Open Meetings Act, then snitch on everybody that was rocking with him when they fired Grenita Lathan, all of a sudden. Just the fact that she does not have a backbone to vote the way that her constituents need her to vote or vote the way that her heart tells her and she always follows Anne Sung. I, I would go with Kendall. I just, I can't go another four years with Holly. I can't do it. I don't care how many degrees you got. Degrees don't matter with these positions right now. Because it's been proven that just because you have three or four degrees on the wall, you don't know how to make a common sense decision in a school board meeting. I'm just being honest with you. Just because you were a former teacher, that, that doesn't impress me anymore. And that shouldn't be the criteria when it comes to picking a school board rep. Now, tonight, we raising money, y'all. If you want to Zell me something, um, the amounts that we can really impact this thing with is, let me, let me put that up there. This is what we, we can do. If you can do 25, 50, 100, 250, 500, 1,000, doesn't matter. And don't think that you can't donate what you really donate. This is for your children's education as well as some people will, I don't have no kids in the school system. You don't have to have any. You're a taxpayer. When you got a low performing school that's in your neighborhood, it can affect your property rate. Your, your, your property, your property value of your home can go down if your school system, if your school in your neighborhood is a low performing school. And I don't believe schools perform low because the kids can't get it. I believe that schools perform low because that's the way the district wants it done. That's the way that they want it done. So I would probably run with Kendall. Let's go to the next race. That is six. Let's go to seven. Let's go to seven. This is a very interesting race because the incumbent is Anne Sung and she's gonna run against Dwight Jefferson and Bridget Wade. Anne Sung, what can I say? Harvard degree. She has a Harvard, graduated from Harvard University. And I expected more from somebody that graduated from Harvard University because she is also one of the people that participated in the walk-in quorum where the Open Meetings Act was violated. Basically, they were doing business outside of the boardroom, trying to be sneaky and hire a superintendent that had already been fired. You see what I'm saying? That had already been fired prior to this. Disrespect the superintendent in there, gave her hell a whole four years she was in there. Tried to undermine her and now you got a black man in there. How's that gonna work? I don't want to take the chance. So you got Dwight Jefferson and from what I understand, uh, in the law field, that doesn't impress me either. We ain't talking about law in here. We got, we got school district attorneys. You see what I'm saying? We, we, we ain't dealing with law. We dealing with common sense. You know, uh, then you have Bridget Wade. Bridget has raised an astral astronomical amount of money. Um, a lot of people don't like her ideologies because Bridget doesn't believe in masks. Bridget, Bridget is one of those people that doesn't believe in a mask mandate. Bridget is one of those people that believe that this school system is screwed up and it needs to be fixed. You gotta have passion to be able to do it. So these are the people that are running in seven. So let's go to our next race. And let's bring you to the big dog. This the one everybody want to see. This the one that everybody want to see. They want to see Joshua Rosales, who? Myrna Guidry, who's in the seat right now, was appointed to take Wanda's position. And then the OG himself, Gary W. Monroe. Joshua Rosales, I don't know who this may be, but I also know that I wasn't wrong about what I said months ago, that they would try to put a Latino in this race. Because this is predominantly an African-American seat. So they want to flip this seat. I don't care if he's Latino. What I care about most is where the hell you been? Where the hell were you when Worthing was struggling and couldn't pass that star test? Were you battling for those children? When, when these schools were overrun with gangs, two prominent high schools in District Nine, where were you, Mr. Rosales? Did you care about those kids then? Let's talk about Myrna Guidry. You're connected to every major black politician in the city and that don't matter because on election night, I'm gonna kick all y'all asses. Man, Monroe, you got the, you got the, nah, 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 nah. Let me tell you what I'm doing at this moment so you can get a clear understanding. I know what some of the things are that makes crime go up. And one of those things is a poor school system. I know that. That's why I was in Worthing when Dr. Kalia Campbell Ron was there, bringing anti-game programs over there, working with the HISD police to try and keep this school and that community safe. I was the one patrolling around the school and nobody knew after school to make sure there was a fight, that it wouldn't happen. Myrna, where were you? Where were you? Matter of fact, when Worthing passed the star test after struggling all those years, where were you? When they celebrated those children over there, where were you? I was there because I was happy for them. Where were you? When DeBrianna Taylor was assaulted at Madison High School and the kids walked out, Myrna and Joshua Rosales, where were you? I was standing in front of the school with the kids. You understand what I'm saying? When, when, when at Lawson Middle School, when they were over there forcing these kids to sell food when they should have been in class? Joshua and Myrna, where were you? I'm the one that went in there and made that stop. So where were you? The one thing I'm not gonna do in this race is I'm not playing with my opponents. I'm not gonna play with y'all, period. I'm gonna expose every flaw that you have. Don't come through here with all them fancy, you know, you, you, these promises. Have I worked with this district to decrease violence? You damn right I have. Especially gang violence? You damn right I have. Have I gone into a classroom and challenged the retesters? The ones that had to take the star over? The ones that were struggling, if they don't pass it, they don't graduate? Did I go in there with an incentive out of my pocket? $500 for whoever passed this test with the highest score? I did that. Not because I was running, because it needed to be done. So where were you when we were going through all this? When they were trying to close our loving schools? Were you at the district that night fighting for those kids and fighting for those schools? Fighting for those teachers not to lose their job? Hell no. You were sitting home at your house, on your couch, watching the news. Where were you? And now you have the audacity to step out here like you care about these kids? You four years too late and you a dollar short. That's how I feel about it. Say tonight, we trying to raise some money, y'all. We trying to raise some money. I don't care what you can give me. You give me a dollar, you can give me $2, but if you can give me 25, 50, 100, 250, 500, or 1,000, it don't matter. It's all going on the campaign. It's all going on the campaign. I need your help, man. We gonna win this thing. Ain't, ain't no, ain't no losing. Cause I'm gonna be honest with y'all. They got a hit list of schools out right now. Yeah, I'm gonna tell you the real, you wanna know what's going on? Let me tell you what these people trying to do, man. Behind the scenes, they already plotting. They gonna use the pandemic to try to close down some of these black and brown schools. What you just said? I said they're gonna use the pandemic to try to close down some of these black and brown schools because of low enrollment. Well, your enrollment is low because of the pandemic. It is also low because of the way kids get treated in the school. It's also low because you don't have enough teachers there and people are pulling their children out, sending them to schools that are highly equipped. Yeah, they're plotting on closing our schools, but I'd be damned if I would ever vote to do that. Now, I understand the numbers. So if it get down to closing a school, let me tell y'all how they work with me. And I bring it to the community, which I want to do because I work, I would work for y'all. Say they got four schools, they want to close them, right? Okay, cool. What four schools would that be, Mr. Superintendent? And before you say it, Mr. Superintendent, as long as those four schools represent this, then I might be in agreeance with it. If the numbers don't work, if we just can't get past the numbers, one of them need to be black. One of them need to be white. One of them need to be Latino and one of them needs to be a specialty school. But you will not close all of these black and brown schools on my watch. It will never happen. So let's go back, let's, let's, let's go back and we want to, we want to look at my opponent. Cause you in it now, mama. You in it, you in it with the big dog now. Myrna Guidry. You in it with the big dog. Here's my question. Who do you answer to? Do you answer to your constituents? Because you have some neighbors saying you ain't never did nothing for them. They, they can't get you on the phone. They, they can't talk to you, you've ignored them. Do you answer to your constituents or do you answer to the upper black regime of black politics in Houston? Who act like they control everything? You think I give a damn about Senate District 13 supporting you? No, I really don't. I really don't. You think I care about other African-American trustees supporting you? No, I really don't. Because what they're supporting is somebody that they can control. You people, I don't, I wouldn't work for you. I work for the people out there. You feel what I'm saying? I work for the people out there. So you, they, they want you in there so that you can be controlled. And you don't have a problem playing puppet. You don't. Because if you were really in this for these children and these teachers and fighting for what was right, I'd have seen you speak at a board meeting. I'm not impressed with the way you speak, nah. I'm not impressed. I see you go along to get along. Tonight, we raising money, y'all. You can donate whatever you want, but these are the figures that I really need. But if you give me $2, that's $2 more than what I have and I appreciate it. Make sure you get on the campaign finance report so that way when you go in there and you look at my stuff, you'll see it. But the thing is, we need to raise some money. We gotta keep raising money, man. We gotta keep raising money, man. Let me tell you how I feel about this here. Anybody that's in this game and will allow another politician to control them, you ain't worth two dead flies smashed together. And Myrna Guidry, you are not worth two dead flies smashed together on the political level, on the personal level, I don't know. I don't know. You on the political level, I think you need to go on back and be an adjunct professor at TSU like you were doing because right now with some of the decisions that you are making, that they make me a little nervous. I'm gonna give y'all an example. At the last board meeting last Thursday, an issue came up about tasers on police officers. And I plan on sitting down with Chief Lopez from HISD Police, met him the other day. We agreed we would sit down. But at this moment, they want to put tasers on police officers. Let me, let me, let me ask y'all something because I'm confused. In this climate that we are in, this social climate that we are in with black people in police, why would you give them more tools to come after our children with? What scared me the most is when I saw three African-American board members vote to put tasers on police officers. Nobody else on the board voted for that. But the three African-Americans, and that includes my opponent, Myrna Guidry, voted to put tasers on a police officer. Now, they say the tasers will only be on the officers that are on patrol. Well, as I told them, I'd like to see the data of how many times a patrol officer, because they're short of officers, has had to go back into the schools. So if they went back into the schools and you've given them a taser, do they leave it at home? I'm pretty sure they wouldn't. So I don't need a taser on my campuses. I don't need a taser around our kids. But why would an African-American board member vote to put tasers on a police officer? So I applaud the Latino board members, the Asian board members, and I applaud the white board members that use common sense right then to say, no, this is not what we need to do. But the African-Americans who are controlled by the African-American political regime voted for it. My question is why? I don't want to hear your teardropping stories. Nah, I don't want to hear that. What I want to know is why? Yes, my opponent in the school board elections was one of the people that voted to put tasers on police officers in the schools. But they say it's not in the schools, but I say if something happens, they'll put them in there. Last Thursday night, Senate District 13 that supports her. Who's in Senate District 13? Come on, man, we know who that is, man. That's them big dogs. All them big dog black ones. Y'all down with putting tasers on police officers? Y'all got a problem with the new gun laws? So what type of stuff is this? Say, the bottom line is, I'm fighting to get where I rightfully need to be, to be able to help these children. Yeah, I'm one vote, but when you sit down and talk to me, I'm the voice of reason. I'm the voice of reason. Can I work side by side with Mr. Millard House? I could do it with my eyes closed. But the one thing I think Mr. House would say, because he's got to say all the politically correct things. And when I sit on the board, I will have to say that too, but you'll know my heart because I'm always speak my mind in a respectful way. That Mr. House, you can't bullshit a bullshiter. So as long as we working in the best interest of the kids, then I will vote for the things that need to be voted for as long as that's what my constituents want. What are you gonna do a little bit different? Like I've always told y'all, when I win, I'm gonna have a monthly meeting. I'm gonna bring the agenda. You are going to tell me how to vote in the board meetings. Nobody does that. Not the three black ones that's sitting up there. Nah, they don't listen to the community. Well, they listen to certain parts of the community, especially if they got a soror that runs some of their schools. I ain't your frat brother. You ain't my sorority sister. I ain't got nothing to do with the daily operations of how people run their campuses. I would have one employee and his name would be Millard House. He expects excellence from me, I would expect excellence from him. So the school board elections are set. Uh, our first, I don't know if it's the first one, I may not be getting invited to all of them, but from what I can understand, our first forum is Houston GPS on the 26th of August. That's a Thursday night. And you gotta come in there, present yourself, ask these questions and then they'll decide if they want to support you and endorse you. You have no choice but to finally accept the fact that I have been right about 99% of the things that I have brought up. I have been right about an unequal education in the Houston Independent School District. I have been right about the segregation of some of these campuses. Say, man, it is what it is. I have been right about safety on the campuses. Maybe if you'd have listened to me, a kid would have never died at Bel Air. But I'm the, I'm the crazy one. But everything I say seems to happen. I was right about the corruption in procurement where all the money being stole. Yeah, yeah, I was right about that. And I'm gonna tell you some other things that I'm right about. I'm right about teachers making more money and I'm dead serious about them making more money. We're the richest, biggest school district in the state of Texas. Why shouldn't they make more money? You feel what I'm saying? Why should these teachers be making these menial salaries? What you paying a teacher right now, honestly, bro? And I'm gonna be straight up with you. What you paying a teacher right now? If they were smart, they'd go run a Popeyes. They could be a manager or a general manager over a Popeyes and make more money than they make as a teacher. Come on, bruh. We can't keep doing it like this. And as far as the educational gaps that's widening between African-American and brown kids compared to white kids, that's because the school system has set it up to do that. Tonight, y'all, we raising money, man. I need you to give something. You may have given already, but I need you to give as much as you can give, bruh. I need you to give something. And if you want to Zell it to me, you can go 832-933-3447. Or if you want to Cash App it, you send it to Cash App, Dollar Sign, Gary Monroe, G E R R Y M O N R O E. Gary Monroe, G E R R Y M O N R O E. I believe that teachers. Should make. More money. I also believe. Because I watch y'all mess over a lot of these older teachers. That can handle classrooms. We need to look at something. To figure out how we can get some of these older experienced teachers back on our campuses that knew how to run classrooms, man. You took all the best teachers out. Greer started it. You know what I'm saying? And. I have no problem with young people being teachers, but some of these young people shouldn't be going to the campuses that they're going to because those campuses are just too hard for them straight out of college. We need to get some more experienced teachers in our classrooms. If you want the results. If you want the results. From an academic standpoint to increase. Then you gonna have to put the best of the best in the classroom. So maybe it ain't the teachers. Maybe it's the administrators. You know, the bully ones. The SSOs give a mandates to bully teachers so they can get them out the buildings. Oh, I know, because I've had to represent several of them. There is something seriously wrong with the Houston Independent School District. And let me show you one of the things that's wrong with it. This right here. This right here is one of the biggest problems. Which one of these people have outworked me in the last four years? I've done more for kids standing behind that podium. Than either one of these has done for kids. Anywhere. Myrna's behind the. The Diaz. You can't even compare one year work behind that Diaz to the four years I've done the last four years. You can't compare it. And that tells me that you are not serious. If you watched us struggle for four years. And you had a passion for children, the least you could have done. Is shown up for a board meeting and fight for those kids, but you never did. And my question is why? Why, sister? Why you never showed up? Because it wasn't important to you. That's why. It was not important to you to show up. So therefore. It is what it is. You didn't show up because you didn't wanna show up. And now you you showing up at the Worthing, the South Side takeover. You wanna ride in a car and let them know I'm, 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 I'm trustee Myrna Gidry. Who cares? They needed you four years ago. They needed you. And I didn't have. A kid in school for the last four years. Two of those years, she was gone. So I didn't have a kid in the system. But I was fighting for him tooth and nail because without an education, they're dead. They're dead. So let's talk about the fact that on the slick. On the slide under the table. You guys are really plotting to close down some schools. Do you realize that when you close a school, you close the whole community? Do you realize? The impact? It will have on communities if you close those schools? Another reason that I am fighting to get on the board, there is no male presence. You have nine women up there. Oldest symbolism of having the first all female board. Who cares? All y'all did for four years was fight. All y'all did was fight. It wasn't all female for two of those years. Because Sergio Lira was on the board. But. You females didn't do anything but fight. You didn't accomplish the goals. I sat on a special ed ad hoc committee. The recommendations that were brought from that committee to the board. What have y'all done with them? Why are we still talking about fixing special ed? Because you don't have the intentions of fixing it. But I do. Because those special ed babies. They need as much help as they can get. And I'm gonna fight to give them all the help that they can get. Well, we don't have a lot of money. Yes, you do. Quit making up all these extra, extra positions in the central office. Get rid of the SSO position. Streamline the legal department. Do y'all know that HISD normally, on a normal day, has forty-five of the top law firms in the city on retainers? They get sued almost on a daily basis. Do you know how many of those suits they've had to settle out of court? Do you know how wrongfully? How many times teachers have been kicked out of the district wrongfully? I refuse. I am refusing. To sign a letter of separation as a trustee unless I thoroughly investigate. Show me the investigation on paper. That's the way I would investigate. I wanna know why this teacher. Who's been with this district for twenty years. All of a sudden. Is being kicked out of this district. I wanna know why this teacher who's been with this district for twenty years, all of a sudden just wants to retire. I wanna know. Because I know the games that y'all have played. I have defended so many teachers as unreal. It is unreal. And it's time out for that. This is why our school district. Is failing. The kids aren't failing. The school district is failing the kids. Becky, you know, I got a special place in my heart for my special ed babies. The school district is failing the kids. You people need to wake up. This is not about black or white anymore. This is not about black and brown versus white anymore. This is, this is not about Republican or Democrat. Our children are a number. They're an ID number. They represent a dollar sign. And your tax money is paying for these people's incompetency that run the school system. It's time that we get what we paid for, which is a quality education for every single child that attends an HISD school. It is time out for the foolishness. Tonight we raising money, man. We gotta raise some money, man. I need y'all. I need y'all help, man. I need your help, man. We, we gotta raise some money, man. You can give twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, two fifty, five hundred, a thousand, whatever you can give. If you give two dollars, I take the two dollars because we gonna win this race November second. See, they were laughing at me four years ago. Man, really nine years ago, they was laughing like crazy. Who is this dude? You ain't laughing now? Because everything I said would happen to our school system. Has actually. Happened. It's actually happened. And that's the sad part about it. You feel what I'm saying? How did I know? That all of this stuff? Would happen to our babies? They never hear their head. They threw rocks and never hear their ears. They never cared about our children. It is time to shake the game up. It's time. No more playing. So you guys. I know you gonna come into these forums dressed impeccably well. You won't address the OG. I can promise you that. You, you won't do it. You're gonna come in with your fancy words and your promises? And ain't none of that should matter to nobody sitting in that audience. What should matter is the product that they put on the field the last four years. And what they put out there the last four years. Has been straight garbage. It's been racism. It's been all of that. I am sick of it. And it's time for a change. You people that have your grandkids in school, your children, your nieces and nephews, you should want better. You should have trustees. All nine of them should have the ideologies that I have. All nine of them should have the passion that I have. You feel what I'm saying? So if you wanna donate to me, man, you can send it through ZO and you use the phone number that's provided, eight three two nine three 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 four four seven. If you wanna send it through Cash App, you can send it through there and it's dollar sign, G E R R Y M O N R O E. All nine of these trustees. Should have the same passion. All nine of these trustees should be fed up with what they've seen. I am not here. To be your friend. I'm here to affect change. I'm showing up to do what I do best, which is sit down, negotiate, let's make it happen, and let's make it better for these kids. I am here to do that. I don't need to drink a Bud Light with you when the board meeting over because I ain't there to kick it with you. I ain't there to go to your little fancy parties and take all your pictures. I'm not there for that. I am coming. To save our schools. I am coming to make education better. I am coming to get these teachers more money, these paraprofessionals more money, these custodians more money, the, 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 these kitchen workers more money. I am coming to make it better. I am coming to make it make sense as to why we can't pay people livable wages in the richest school district in Texas. But I'm mainly coming for my babies. Yeah, they my babies too. You say it takes a village. If it takes a village, I'm one of them villagers that give a damn about all of them. Every single one of them. Love them to death. Want them to be stars. Whether it's on the field, the court, the classroom, whether it's in culinary arts, I want them to be rock stars. The same way we were just in the Del Mar Stadium the other day being inducted. Into the new HISD Hall of Honor. When are we gonna make some Hall of Honors for our smart children? When are we gonna recognize the academic excellence? Of some of our smart children? When are we gonna, you know, roll the red carpet out for the gang member kid that left the gang and decided I wanted to graduate from high school? When are we gonna do that? When are we gonna do that? It is time out. For what they put on our plate. What they've shown us for four years. It's no more. It's no more. It is official. The, the, the game has been set. And the OG is ready. I'm ready to rock and roll. I'm ready. I, I need a person like Osborne Mitchell Junior. Running the school campus. We get, we gotta get people like that back. We gotta get people that have a heart for special ed babies like Brenda Lindbergh Sanders. We need her back. We need every school to have a PTO. We need schools with after school programs that can keep our children busy so they not in the streets dying. Are they dollar signs? Are they, are they, are they the kids that we love? I wanna know. It's time out. It's time out. Thank you, Ms. Brenda. Thank all of y'all that have been donating. Tonight, but we gotta raise money, y'all. We gotta raise money tonight, man. If you can give twenty-five, fifty, a hundred, whatever you can give. You can give a dollar. I don't care. Whatever you can give, man, we gotta raise money. And I know I'm coming to you once or twice a month now, but that's what it's gonna take. That is what it's gonna take for us to be able to do what we need to do. And on election night, when it's all said and done. You can put trustee in front of my name. Ms. Gidry, no disrespect. But you gonna take that L November second. So Senate District, Senate District thirteen, every lab one of y'all. How dare you? And see, this is what I'm saying about people not supporting the real grassroots workers. If you in Senate District thirteen, how dare you not support me when I've supported you? But I don't expect you to support me now. You got your panties in a bunch. You got your feelings hurt. Because I've been telling the truth. But you would go support somebody who has never stood up for our children. I expect that from y'all. I expect it from you. And for those that are not running. And you got two more years, some of y'all already got opponents. You just don't know it yet. We ain't happy with y'all either. The ones that are sitting there. You sitting there, you smirking. Bruh, you in, you not coming to our neighborhoods campaigning like you've been off, you've been on your grind for us. We done woke up. We smell it now. We smell it now, bruh. We, we can see it now. My T-shirts will be ready tomorrow. They'll be ready tomorrow. Every facet of the game. We coming. How dare you support people? Who've not done anything for our children? But that's expected. That is expected. Because that's the way. That y'all get down. You need people in office that you can control. Until my failed African American upper level political leadership. You will never control me. Never in your life. At all. It's time for y'all to step away from the school system. You've had a lock on our school system for the last thirty years. And, you know, everybody wanna think it's the white folks that's messing over these black schools. No, it's the black folks that's messing over these black schools. Because they hand is in the cookie jar. HISD is nothing more than a money pit. Where people show up and they dig off in the money and they try to come up with what they wanna come up with. And this is why every now and then you have people being indicted, going to jail. Why is this going on in the school system? Why is this going on in the school system? Y'all, we need help tonight. We gotta raise some money, man. We gotta raise some money. So we gonna go back over these races again. Let me, let me put the screen up for y'all. We gonna go back over them. We gonna let you know who's running and what that may change by tomorrow. Maybe they didn't get everybody in the system. Uh. Let me, let me double check. I'mma, I'mma double check on my phone. And we're gonna see if that has changed. In the last forty-five minutes. Let's see. Let's see. Did it change? Did they upload some more people into the system? So far. It hasn't changed. So let's go back up. Let's go back up. We're gonna start at the top. All right, we're gonna start in District one. These are the people that are running in District one. Elizabeth Santos looks like she's not running unless her paperwork comes in later. It looks like Matthias Kopinski. And Jeanette Linda Garza. In District one. In District five, you have Caroline Walters. Maria Benzone and Stu Diggard. In District six, you have Gregory. Degatire. Holly Marie Villaseca Flint, who is the incumbent. And Kendall Baker. District seven, you have Dwight Jefferson, Anne Sung, and Bridget Wade. And in District nine, you have Joshua Rosales, Myrna Gidry. And the OG, the five star General Gary Monroe. Now, what I really wanna do is wish everybody luck. Because the hard work should start now for some of y'all. I've been working hard since January. I've been working hard since January. Hold on a second, y'all. I just got a hot one. Hold on, let's see. Okay. All right, I've been working hard since January. But you guys that are starting now, to each one of you. This is a journey. I've, 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 I've traveled this journey before. It's a lot of hard work. I look forward to battling you cats and you catettes. In these open forums. I look forward to you shining like diamonds. And on election day, let the chips fall where they may. Now I will say in District nine. Because I know y'all watching. In District nine. Please don't try to use them ballot harvesters. If you gonna beat me, you gonna beat me straight up. Please don't try to do nothing because we on it. We on it. Please don't do that. Because you're gonna end up in a lot of trouble. If you're gonna beat me, you're gonna beat me fairly. I can promise you that. And I'm smiling because I know what's in play. I know. I recommend you don't even try it. I recommend you don't even try it. But you know what, man? It's an honor. It's an honor and a pleasure to get out here and work for the community, work for these kids. I really love doing it. Um, I really, really love doing it. And you know what? I don't think I would wanna do nothing else except help these kids, man. I like when they feel they can't do something and then all of a sudden you give them that motivation and they pull it off and they so happy. That's what we're supposed to do, y'all. That's what we're supposed to do. So we ain't gonna even do the full hour tonight. We got about ten minutes left. And what I wanna do is tell each and every one of y'all that donated tonight, thank you so much. Because every little bit counts. Every single little bit that you give counts. So if you gave a dollar, thank you. If you gave two dollars, thank you so much. If you gave twenty-five dollars, thank you so much. And if you haven't given, please give if you can because we gotta get this done. Well, how, what you think your chances are, Mr. Monroe? I was coached by a great one. I don't take any opponent lightly. I think all of them have the ability to beat me. Every single one of them. So that's why I'm not going to take my opponents lightly. I'm fighting for the survival of these children. I'm fighting to get these kids off the street corners and back into the classroom so that they can buy into education. That's what I'm fighting for. Because I'm tired of going to funerals. I'm fighting for that. Whether I'm on the board or not, I'm fighting for it. I've proven that. I didn't come up missing for four years when I lost. I did more work in the last four years than I did in the first five. I didn't do it because I was gonna run. I just did it because it needed to be done. I need volunteers, man. I need volunteers to help me block walk. I need volunteers to, 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 to phone bank. I need volunteers. You know, when it's, when it's early voting, to work at the polls, I need volunteers on Election Day. We want them red shirts everywhere on Election Day. We taking over the, we taking over the whole district now. We taking it over. Man, you a little loud to be on the school board, but I'm honest. Can you work with people behind closed doors? I do that all the time. I work with city governments all over the country. Never raised my voice, never screamed, never cursed, never do none of that. I can be myself right here. The one thing you get with me as a school board rep or just as a person, I'm genuine. I'm genuine. I'm gonna tell you the truth whether you like it or not. As a school board member, it's not my job to make administrative decisions for the Houston Independent School District. It is not my job. No. And I wouldn't wanna do that. You have a superintendent, seems like he's gonna be a great superintendent. That's his job. My job is to set policy. I clearly know what the dynamics of my job would be. I mastered it. And come November second, we gonna shock the world. We gonna pull Ali on these boys. You feel what I'm saying? So it ain't but one way to go out of this thing. You feel me? Let's, let's get, get up out of here. And now let's share the screen again. Y'all bear with me. Because I wanna remind you exactly what we are going to do November second. We gonna make them mad, bro. We gonna definitely make them mad November second. Let's, let's, let's stop the screen. Uh huh, I'm teasing you, huh? Let's stop the screen. And let me see if you got another school board rep as fly as me. Cuz I'm coming. The OG is coming. And it ain't gonna never be the same.
Should people vote for Gary Monroe?
Well, you know, as being a fighter, I know fighters when I see them. Monroe's been fighting for these children, trying to make sure that they got
Until tomorrow night, y'all good people.
He also fights for the teachers, make sure the teachers get the proper pay that they're supposed to. So he got my vote, Monroe.
He's a compassionate man. He loves the community. He loves the kids.
Sheenland?
He's going to get the teachers a raise.
What I told?
And that's what they rightly deserve.
I don't see nobody else fighting like he fighting. And plus, he no sellout.
Because he's the five-star general.
November second, it's been set. The OG is coming, boy. Time to make a man.
And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. Sunnyside, man, we gotta make a man. Them boys in Hong Park, man, we gotta make a man. Say Westbury, baby, man, we gotta make a man. Monroe in District Nine, and it's time to kick some ass. Say, man, it's been four years, now it's four years later. And all I can say is it's four years wasted. The district on the BS, teachers ain't getting paid. Trustees is looking stupid with the things they say. District Nine up again, so I'm coming cutthroat. Man, you know what it is, so you know how it goes.
I need y'all to donate.
The kids ain't learning, the schools ain't safe. They shot a kid at Bayland, boy, members just saving face. Everybody looking side, side. That ain't the flyway. Parents afraid, uh, pull out the driveway. Virtual learning, nobody can feel it. District Nine's hurting bad. Navigate the pandemic, but uh, but we gonna win it this time. Go in the voting booth, big homie Monroe in District Nine. And put me in the seat that I rightly deserve. I got beat four years ago and I continue to serve. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. Sunnyside, man, we gotta make a man. Them boys in Hong Park, man, we gotta make a man. Say Westbury, baby, man, we gotta make a man. Monroe in District Nine, and it's time to kick some ass. Say ain't no boys like them sunnyside boys, cuz them westbury boys don't play. Okay, soon as I step up on the scene, you see that look in my eye. It's the OG, baby, repping the south side. I'm on the real dog, you know what it is. Nine years in the gang, getting down for the kids. I'm fighting for the programs. Plus, I give them the business. How you do it like that, dog? These bastards wouldn't listen. From lawsuits to Fed cases, I did it all, dog. And if the kids ain't good, I get a phone call. Open your eyes, trustees, it's hitting high. With these underserved schools from the north to south side. We gotta fix special ed. We gotta fix GT. And put the kids in the classroom and out of the streets. From the war zone, baby, we bringing the heat. To the madhouse, Westbury, time to eat. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. Sunnyside, man, we gotta make a man. Them boys in Hong Park, man, we gotta make a man. Say Westbury, baby, man, we gotta make a man. Monroe in District Nine, and it's time to kick some ass. Yeah, check it, the school system being up to no good. Especially if you're black or brown and you from the hood. Even when I was going to these below average schools, we were using the same books our granddaddy used. I got a call from Monroe, he said, let's do a track. And get up in they ass for trying to hold these students back. He scared the hell out of them. They hate him but still respect him. That's why my homie go viral every time I check him. How can they win if beneficial programs are missing? So he gonna take that position and body slam the system. Loving our children, man, it's almost like these fools looting. And our students ain't the ones doing the school shootings. They set the hood up to fail, that's the bottom line. Cuz in they eye, your child ain't nothing but a dollar sign. Monroe kicking in that door like I told you. District Nine about to get a certified soldier. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. And uh, in case you boys ain't know, it's Monroe in District Nine coming through the front door. Sunnyside, man, we gotta make a man. Them boys in Hong Park, man, we gotta make a man. Say Westbury, baby, man, we gotta make a man. Monroe in District Nine, and it's time to kick some ass.
It's just like that, homie. I can promise you one thing. I'mma leave it on the floor. Ain't nothing else left to be said. I holla at y'all tomorrow.